All right, we will let everybody in. And I think David may try to join us at some point. If he does, great. If he doesn't, that's fine, too. We can talk a little bit about. One of you guys can take the location thing. Well, I think we've got everybody in the waiting room just popped in.
And there's Ryan, Ryan, Mandy, Mandy, Ryan.
Hi.
Mandy.
How are you?
I'm well.
Good. You guys haven't met in person yet, have you?
No.
Ah, not yet.
Man, did you get my email? Because I didn't get a response from your email, I don't think.
Really?
Oh, I was just telling Ricky, I had emailed you after that first email, but then I didn't get a response back from you, so I wasn't certain.
What? I'm terrible. I'm usually better than that, I promise.
All right, we can get this started. So, welcome. My name is Sheri Marshick. I'm the Executive Director of the Upper Midwest Film Office. And this for me is my partner, my business partner.
Hi, I'm Ricky McManus, and I am Chief Production Officer of the Upper Midwest Film Office. Glad to have you on, on our Zoom call today. I think there'll probably be a few others joining us. And just FYI, it's very informal.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to ask all of you to mute when you come in and then unmute. Obviously, if you guys are having a conversation, you don't have to mute, but it just helps keep everything. If you have any questions, feel free to raise your hand and/or you can put it in the chat. We'll be, as Ricky said, it's very, very informal. We want this to seem accessible and we want to have fun because you're making a film. Can't be any more fun than that. Um, so maybe Ricky, if you can just give a little bit of an introduction of the Film Office and what we do at the Film Office. And then we'll, we'll start after that with Cory.
Thanks, Sheri. Absolutely. Love to. The Film Office actually started in 96, and it was the Upper Minnesota Film Office. It was a very part-time office because doggone it, there wasn't a heck of a lot of business. But every once in a while, we'd get a nice feature here or there, but it was far and few between. That all changed. And it changed just a couple of years ago when Sheri Marshick came into my life. And she is our Executive Director, and she is flipping amazing, let me tell you. And we now have an incentive, and that is why our landscape has changed. We not only have one incentive, we have two incentives for the state, either as a tax credit or you have a rebate. We have one for St. Louis County, which is a rebate, one in the Iron Range, which is another rebate, and one for the city of Duluth. Those are stackable. So that is why people are looking at our area right now and saying, this is a good area to shoot our project in. So we are becoming a little more popular, which is fabulous. And that is why we need not only a full-time office, but a really full-time office. But we are so dang thrilled that this project wanted to come to our area. It's, it's a fabulous project, fabulous people involved, and, and we are so glad you're here.
I forgot, I negated to thank our sponsors, which we absolutely need to make sure that we take the time to do. So St. Louis County, the IRRB, the Blenheim Foundation, and then also a shout out to Catalyst, which is how we actually met this team originally. Catalyst is a story institute and a festival that's here. And that's when we met Mandy, well, you met in 2019, I met Mandy in 2021. So, um, super shout out to that team. We're super grateful that they are here as well in the Northland. Um, Cory, this is Cory Miller. I'll let you introduce yourself because you'll do a better job at that than I will. And maybe let us know a little bit about you and your work. Cory's the director for this project, and I'll hand over to you.
Hi, guys. Yeah, I'm directing this little film called Body Language, and it's a thriller. And we're just really excited to be in Duluth. And just to give you guys some background on how it came to be, I directed a short a couple of years ago, and it was kind of in the same vein. It was the same premise, but much more condensed. And I went to a film festival and ended up meeting Chad and Kerry Hayes, who were the writers of The Conjuring. And they saw something in that little film, and they encouraged me to expand it. So I got to work with them and developed it into, you know, the feature that we're shooting now. And I'm just really excited about it. It's been such a lovely process. Everyone in Duluth here has been so supportive. And, you know, I'm just, you know, I couldn't be happier with how it's going. It's been a great, great process so far.
So what's your background? What else have you, like, what have you done before you started doing this?
Well, I went to film school at UCLA, made a bunch of shorts. And then as you transition to the professional world, it's, you know, getting a first feature off the ground is tough. And you have some, you know, you take two steps forward, one step back, and you're always trying to line up the financing and find the right partners to get your projects off the ground. And one of the nice things about this project is that it's a, it's pretty contained. It takes place in, you know, very few locations. And writing those kind of movies can be tricky because sometimes it can feel like you're just jerry-rigging the, the story to, to a location. But I finally found a really exciting way to do it in a small amount of locations. And before that, I've just been more on the writing end. I've always directed, but, but I've been making my living on, on the writing end. Options and sold a bunch of features and TV pilots and, you know, taking that step from selling to making can, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a roller coaster. But, um, but I'm just excited. We're having this opportunity now to make this one. It's, it's really cool.
We're thrilled to have you.
Sheri, you're muted. There you go.
We're thrilled to have you, and we're excited about it. We'll turn now to Mandy June Turpin. Mandy Turpin has, this is her second feature here in Duluth. And maybe if you could just kind of give us a little introduction of who you are, and then why Duluth? How'd you find us? How'd you come back? I know you're asking yourself the same thing, right?
Oh, no, not at all. Um, I'm Mandy. Yeah, this is our second feature in less than five months, I believe. We did, we shot one in May and June, a Christmas movie called Mary Kiss Cam, which is going to be airing on Hulu. Thanksgiving night, we're very excited. I had met Ricky in 2019 at Catalyst. I had a project that was in, in the Film Festival, and we were fortunate enough to win the comedy portion of that. And we kind of, at that point, had a lot of introduction to Duluth, and we kind of fell in love with it. And then the pandemic happened, and then the next catalyst after that, I came back with another project. And again, then I met Sheri, and, you know, I said, I want to bring a project back. And then just happened that Mar Vista offered me Mary Kiss Cam, and we brought it back. And then when we were shooting here, we were embraced so much by the community that we decided, you know, Mar Vista gave me another one, and I said, yeah, let's go back to Duluth. And we really like shooting here because there's such support here for, for the film industry. There really is. And there's a, you know, the locations are beautiful. Everybody comes out. It's a real community feeling, and, and that's lovely. Because, you know, sometimes when you do come into a state that you're not really familiar with, it's very hard to, you know, it's, it's hard to produce something where you're not really familiar. But when you have such support, like Ricky and Sheri and UMFo and Minnesota Film Commission, it's, it makes it really easy to say yes to shooting here. I really enjoy it. Yeah.
Thank you. We're happy to have you. And, you know, we're, we're, we can maybe dig in later to what producers might ask you, questions that producers might ask you, answers that you might have for them. They're thinking about bringing a project here. But before we do that, John Duffy is your line producer, right? Is that your, yeah, you're the line producer. This is John Duffy. Welcome.
Yes, so I'm John Duffy. Greetings, everybody. And yes, I'm the line producer. And just to tell you a little bit for those who, line producer is kind of the hands-on producer who supports the director and the producer on trying to put a project together, like the practical manager of creating the schedule, budgets, and supervising the, the team as we prep, as we shoot, as we wrap. So that's kind of what I do. And, you know, here, it's, you know, it's, every time is different. Mandy's very hands-on, and she does so much stuff as a producer, which is pretty amazing. And this has been a great experience because, you know, we've been able to come back here to this great town with great support, like you guys who've supported us the first time and supporting us again. So it's fabulous to be here. And then some of the stuff that we're looking to do, people can go to your Facebook page if they want to be extras because we're going to be needing extras for the last three days of our shoot, which is on November 16th, 17th, and 18th, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of the last days of our shoot. So anybody who wants to join us and become extras can reach out on your Facebook page and send an email with their picture, their bio, so that they can join us, and we'll contact them to become extras. And what's the best part of shooting this project? Well, there's a lot, being back in Duluth with some great people, being back with Mandy for the second time, and getting to work with Cory for the first time, and having, you know, him, his process of what he's doing to make this a great film. So all around, we completed the first week of shooting, and it's been great, and we're looking forward to the rest of it.
Awesome. Um, I'm going to throw the questions for David because I know we asked David to hop on last second. And so wondering if, who wants to take this, but like, what does a locations manager do? And what can people expect to see around town when a project is shooting? I know that it's different for every project, but I think people would love to like, understand, like, where are you? What are you doing? Not where in particular that you're shooting exactly, but like, when they're seeing trucks on the street, what does that mean?
Well, there's a couple of things. Usually, there's two things. There's a, a location manager finds locations, and then they manage locations. In the case of this, you know, Mandy came in a little early on a scout and found a ton of the locations, which took that off from the location, location manager doing that. But once we got those locations, then the manager has to manage them. And that's everything from talking to neighbors, explaining what we're doing, where we put our trucks, because there's going to be like five trucks, rip truck, electric truck, camera truck, and then our vehicles, makeup, wardrobe. In some locations, we have a base camp, so they're in different places than the actual location. Other places, they'll be actually at the same location, like when we're downtown in Duluth. And so we're in different places, and, you know, we try to minimize the impact. We try to respect the, and the location manager is responsible for all this. We try to respect the neighborhood, respect the people, respect the businesses, and be able to do everything properly for people so that everybody has a good experience. And they want us to come back to do the third, fourth, and fifth movie here in Duluth. So that's kind of, then the location manager helps us do that.
So the location manager might be the one that, that the general public ends up connecting with maybe the most. For a lot of things.
Correct. Also, really quick, also, you know, the, why the location manager is so important is if somebody comes into a town that they're not really familiar with, and you have somebody local who knows the area really well, they also are able to assist you in finding locations. And, you know, a lot of the location managers around the country, or in Los Angeles, or even here, have books that if, let's say that we need a coffee shop, and they've already reached out to several coffee shops in town, we can go to them and say, we're looking for a coffee shop, and they can say, well, these are the ones who are open to having you film there. So it really kind of helps you when you do have to come and do the location scout. And, and they already pretty much have a relationship with, with everybody, you know. And, and it's, it's an interesting thing, because when people say, oh, I'll, I'll, you can come shoot here, it's always explaining to them what that means. Because it's like someone saying, I want to be an extra, and we go, okay, just so you know, being an extra means you're there all day. And a lot of times, it's about waiting around, or it's, you know, and I think that's what a location manager does also, is explains to prospective clients who are, you know, have those locations, what it really means to shoot in your neighborhood and use your house or use your business. Because it's not just a quick one-and-out. It's, you know, it's, it could be, you could be at the same location for weeks and weeks and weeks. So, um, yeah, so they help explain all that, too.
And then just to reiterate, you put it in the chat, but for people who are watching, it's bodylanguagemovie@gmail.com for extras casting, to send in their picture and their contact information, so we can follow up with them for those three days of extra casting.
If people were going to say to you, hey, I want to work on that movie, probably a little bit late, but in general, how far ahead do people crew up for a project like this?
Oh, well, you hope, we hope we're crewed up quite a ways out, especially because in some, a place like Minnesota, you know, they're, the crew tends to, you know, book out pretty, pretty far out in advance. So, you know, I, and John might have a different thought on this, but I always like to at least a month out, two, a month and a half, be able to know that, yes, I've got my grips and my gaffers, and, you know, and, and everybody like that, just so we are, so we know going into a location what we will need. So I always like as far as possible, you know, it'd be nice if you had several movies in a row where you could actually go, hey, we're going to book you this, this three months and this three months. I mean, that would be the ultimate goal if we could do something like that. If we keep, you know, rolling movies back-to-back and employ people.
True or false? You would rather hire local people than bring people in from elsewhere?
Yes and no. Um, yes, I would rather hire people locally that I hope that are qualified to do, you know, what we need. It's always easier to hire people that, you know, that you don't have to fly in, you don't have to put up. But you also need, you know, qualified people that can, you know, be keys and, and help train people in that specific department. I mean, you know, that's, that's what we need to do a lot. It's hard because, you know, in a, in a perfect world, in a, in a state like Minnesota, you'd be four or five deep. And what I mean by four or five deep is you could have four or five movies going at one time, and everybody on that crew is qualified, and that has experience, and that's able to work at a level that, you know, is expected. But, you know, that's something that, you know, comes with time. You know, Atlanta didn't start out as Atlanta at the beginning. You know, they started, you know, and people started moving back to Atlanta. They started training people. They started doing that kind of stuff. So, um, so yes, I would love to hire everybody local if I possibly could. But again, it, it, it really depends on, you know, people's experience. So.
Um, question for the team. Because we are really kind of young in, in this industry here, and we're building up our infrastructure. I know there's many opportunities out there for entrepreneurs that want to start their own business that caters to the industry. What would you say some of our top priorities are?
Catering, uh, production, uh, production accounting, uh, production legal. John, what else?
Equipment, equipment like trailers, so makeup trailer, wardrobe trailer, star trailers, that kind of equipment, infrastructure support, you know, vans being, you know, even the rental companies here like Avis and Enterprise have limited amount of vehicles available. So that's a challenge. So there's a lot, a lot of challenges in a small market like this, and the more we can find a way to overcome those, the easier it'll be. Because we don't want to try and go out, once again, if you have to rent out of Minneapolis, that means, you know, more of a challenge for us. So the more we can find locally here, or infrastructure can get built locally, the better it's going to be for your guys' goals. So what you're trying to do to build up the industry.
I'd say location scouts, too, yeah?
Yes, yes.
Those, and that's, that like know the area and have, I mean, maybe explain it a little bit, but it's less, it's less about managing and more about finding.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Definitely gaffers and grips.
Yep.
And then access, I would say. So like, there, there may be a lot of different bridging companies that, that could enter into our industry, but the, the access isn't really there right now, so.
And also production facilities, you know, again, it's interesting because in Los Angeles, they have places that are, you know, we have studios that's already set with that infrastructure, but there's also smaller companies like, and I'm probably going to mispronounce its name, but Silver, I think it's Silver Spoon in, in Orange County. They have, I don't know, it's probably five to 7,000 square foot where they have individual sets already built that you can rent. They have a fuselage of a plane that you can shoot on, that, because that's kind of what we did for DAXD, is we went in there, and we were able to use an apartment and office space, and that, you know, and it's just a, a smaller facility that has actual interior locations that makes it easier to shoot all year round. So, um, you know, things like that would be great. Cory, is there anything that you think? Housing?
Um, I mean, I've been happy with, frankly, like, I've just been really, yeah, this is my first feature, and I feel really blessed because everyone in Duluth has been so supportive and wonderful. And Ricky took us around and helped find virtually all the locations. And everywhere we go, you'd be, tell people we're, we're shooting here, and I just, you know, people are really excited and supportive. So I can't think of anything offhand that I've experienced that's like, we, we need this. I think Mandy and John can kind of speak to the more nuts and bolts aspects of things, but from like, uh, sort of supportive welcoming atmosphere, everyone's been incredible. I just feel very lucky to, uh, to be doing this here.
Leonard, it was, it's, I just, I, I heard your voice, and I was like, who is speaking? It's so nice to have you on. Hi, I've heard your name so many times, but I've never met you. It's a pleasure to meet you and to have you here. So Leonard joins us from Minneapolis. But can you talk a little bit more about what you meant earlier when you were saying something about access? I think I, I would love for people to understand that just a little bit more if they're coming and listening to this later on.
Welcome, Leonard.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, yeah, access. So in my experience, I've been able to connect with a lot of different organizations that, that can cross over to what it is that we do. But film and television and things like that is just not on their radar. They don't know that it's even a possibility. So sometimes teaching organizations that, hey, you know, you can actually bridge that gap here. There is another revenue stream.
Yeah.
With what we do, but the access isn't there. So, you know, for instance, one of the things that kind of makes me a little outlier, or outlier in a way, is I do other businesses, and I did it before coming into film. So when I threw the mixer, and then throw on the mixer, I'm able to bring in different companies that, you know, would find interest in connecting with people in film and in television and commercials, as well as people. So, uh, yeah, so I would say just that, just that access. I feel like it hasn't been explored as much in order to really flesh out what, what the possibilities are entirely. But just, you know, having platforms where it's inviting to community and just kind of looking at, I mean, like, the guy before me was talking about with Duluth, it's very much like a community. And, you know, if, if we're as inviting to the community as the community is to us, I'm sure that when we reach out and we need something, people will answer the calls, so.
And I think that's what has really drawn me to Duluth is because when we first did Mary Kiss Cam, we literally went into every, we went into every business down Superior, and they were like, yes, come in, use our place. You know, it, it was just, it was wonderful. And I think the access thing is really interesting that you bring that up because when we were first coming here and looking for crew and looking for everybody, it is a little disjointed between Minneapolis and some of the other areas. And when we went down and we met, we hired Linda Cissé, who is our, who is our script supervisor. You know, she was recommended to us by somebody, and we didn't, we had never heard of her, and she's lovely. And I think the more that film starts to come back to Duluth and Minneapolis, there does need to be that connecting force between the cities and the Iron Range and everything. So everybody has the opportunity to, to come and, and work in all the different areas and, and just know who's out there.
Just know who's there.
Yeah. Yep. Because that's, I think, was a big thing for us on Mary Kiss Cam. We came in so quick, and, and we just weren't aware. And I think, you know, because people sometimes leave the state that even live here, they go work somewhere else. And I think if there was that kind of hub of, hey, here's all the, the grips and gaffers, here's all hair and makeup, here's wardrobe, here's this. I think that would be a really great, a great ass, asset for, for filming in Minnesota.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thomas, I see that you are nodding. Do you care that I just totally call you out on this? Did you have something?
No, I, I was agreeing with a lot of the points, like, having, like, being born and raised here, like, is seeing the whole disconnect, I guess you would say, between a lot of it. Like, I've done one orange, and I will see you guys like second week in November. I'm feeling, but it's having that, like, one resource where you can actually see who's doing what currently, you know? Because it is, everyone goes out, like, half of my features have been outstate. You know, I have to travel at work. And that's just why it's Minnesota, because there wasn't enough coming in. And, you know, people drop in and out, the industry, people change, they do something else in their career. So it's, it's hard to keep up with that.
This is a good place for us to plug anybody that reads this that wants to be involved. I just put into the chat, and you can find it on our website, too, that the, the easiest way for outside producers and teams to meet crew and services here that want to be a part, that want to offer their services or be on crew, is to register for in our free platform and our production guide. And it is free, and it is a way for you to put any and all information out there for people to find you. So somebody could like, Manny and John can come in and say, I mean, who are all your grips that you have? And that, we share that database with Minneapolis. So if you are in one, you're in another, and, or you're in the other one. And so that is sort of what we're working on doing. And it does make a difference if you're in there or not. We know that there are some people that have excellent experience that aren't in there because they get their jobs from connection, you know, connections, right? They worked on a project, and so they're like, ah, I just get my jobs from who I know. But here's my plug. They don't know us, and they haven't talked to anybody. They hear about these incentives. They say, yeah, but how many people do they actually have there that can work here? And they look at our production guide, and if it's a little thin, they might be like, I, I don't know that I really want to do it, and we may never get the chance to tell them, but wait, 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 kind of thing. So that is my plug to please, please, please register yourself in the free production guide. There's no commitment that you need to do. And frankly, if you don't want the job, and somebody calls you and says, hey, can you work? You don't have to. It's, it's just a platform for people to meet you. So that's my plug.
Austin just joined us. Yay.
Can I, can I add to that really quick? So, so I threw the mixer twice this year, and both events sold out. I have a third kind of sort of event like that. That's December 3rd. I'm wondering if, what's that? I, I'm wondering if it's possible for you guys to come down and we figure out getting people signed up at, at, at the event?
Probably so.
We would love to, love to. Yeah, love to. Um, and actually, we'll push that out on our social sites, too, so anybody that sees that can come down to Minneapolis and join down there. And then we've had some mixers up here, too, not at the same, at the same level that yours were. Yours was something, looked like it was pretty fantastic, but we also have some up here on a monthly basis that people can get and just get together and chat. I do see that we have somebody that just joined us, David Austin, who is your locations manager.
Hey, David.
Oh, you are, you are on mute.
Yes, he is on mute.
Hello.
He's working on getting off of it, I think. He's working on it. We'll let him come in in a second here.
Say, Cory, I have a question for you. Um, what has been the biggest surprise being in Duluth, Minnesota now, and shooting here?
Biggest surprise?
It's hard to say. I mean, you, you prep these movies for so long and you just hope that, um, like when Manny said we were shooting in Duluth, I've never been here before, so I don't really know what to expect. Um, and, and everyone, yeah, I've said this before, but everyone's been so great. But I guess my biggest surprise is just how easily this script and this story fit into this location. And, um, we were really able to find everything we needed. And so it didn't feel like we were compromising at all, or we're having to, you know, make script tweaks or retrofit the, the story to Duluth. We, we really, you know, the story kind of naturally fit uh, into this place. And, and that's been, that makes my job a lot easier and it allows me to kind of see the, the vision through that I've always had. So that's, that's been lovely.
Perfect. But I'm also gonna, I'm gonna say something about Corey that, um, I think is, is is very wonderful is he is a writer director who was very open to having it be a team effort with the Hayes brothers. These guys, I mean, there was a lot, they did a lot of changes to the script. They, they worked really hard and, um, and you know, and I think that's what makes producers' jobs easier is when a director like Corey, a director writer is very open to going, hey, this is our new reality. Let's, let's fit it. And, and he did that really, really well. And, and that makes our jobs as producers much easier. So we're very grateful for that.
Yeah, well, I have a good team. So I'm, I'm, you know, everyone keeps telling me I'm, I should be spoiled because, uh, it doesn't always happen like this. So I'm, I'm just gonna hope it keeps happening like this.
David, are you there yet? Can we unmute you?
He gave us a thumbs up.
Yeah, they seem to be having a struggle on, on mutant.
All good. It's all good.
Anyway, a, another thing that you. Oh, there he is.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No problem. We're glad you're with us.
We went early trick or treating with our five-year-olds and we kind of lost track of the hour.
Yes.
Apologize because tomorrow we're on set and it just, we lost track.
It was a really, really awesome trick or tea, trick or treating moment, trick or treating moment up in, uh, where, where, where?
Woodland.
Woodland. Yeah. So it was a, a bit distracting. What can we say about it?
We're thrilled to have you and we, um, just, um, we went through sort of what the, um, what the location manager does and that kind of thing. And we know that, um, we've covered a lot of it, but is there anything that you want people to know if they're out and about, um, about the, you know, what to expect? Are you closing down a bunch of roads? Are there things that there's, is traffic going to be stopped? Is there going to be, or will it just some kind of be seamless for the community?
So on this particular one.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of road closures, right? But the thing is, um, there could be, and I feel like we have worked with the community and as much as we could to be a part of the community. And I think that's important to do.
Yeah. So it's, it's less working against the community rather than working with their schedules. So we, on the site we're on right now, there's buses that come through two separate buses at different times. And, um, we, we talked to the community and the neighbors and figured out what was and wasn't working with them in the first couple of days. So even though we're there for three weeks, our impact will be on the bus schedule, just a couple of days. Because we've now been able to organize our, um, Jenny regens, um, around that schedule. Um, just understanding how the community moves, what their work schedule is like. You know, just with boots on the ground, basically.
It's, it's like surveillance.
It is.
It's like police surveillance, surveillance. We're surveilling the community.
Cause our goal is, I, much like when you go camping, your goal is to leave as little impact as possible. Uh, the goal with locations, I feel, and I think you do too, should also be leave as little footprint as possible. Leave only a positive impact as you move through the community. Um, and so that's our goal really, you know, besides making sure that the shoot moves appropriately through time is making sure that the communities want us back, the cities want us back, that we are not creating more of an impediment than we need to, to get our jobs done. So they can go about their daily lives and not being impacted by us.
You have no idea how much I appreciate that. That is fabulous. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You, you know, we're, we're newbies at this. I mean, we really are newbies. Uh, we come from a background of site management, management for construction, water features and so forth and public art. And so for us, it's an experience to come into the movie industry. And the, the part of the problem, not problem, but the challenge is we're actually working with a number of artistic types, right? And we're artists. I'm, I'm a painter. She's, she does work in the art world as well. And so for us to come into this experience as artists, but also site managers, it's a weird administrative.
Yeah, like, yeah, we're, we're artists, but we're also like that. We're looking at the spreadsheet at the end of the day going like, how many hours of overtime did our location management cause if it weren't done the right way?
Yeah.
So like we, we're just in our heads budgeting. What are the actions that we take that create problems down the line versus what are the actions that we can take? That cause, um, we're going to be ahead of schedule or we're going to be meeting our schedule because these things are already in line. Um, so it's a lot of, I understand your artistic needs. Um, but I also understand the site management needs to happen to make those needs happen on schedule.
It's a huge political issue.
Yeah.
Huge.
You just Duffy's heart saying and Mandy's.
And mine.
Yeah, I think that's because we've employed people for, you know, 20 years. So we understand overrun costs. And we're, we're aware of what that extra half hour on set actually means two hours off set of time and the management it takes and just it's, it's a, it's a cascading mountain of positions that rely upon just one pinpoint. And so it.
It's personalities.
Yeah.
Personalities.
You know, just, just to say it, they, they jumped into the mix for us and they've done a great job and they've, you know, both management, both community relations, both organization, uh, both just being, just being there from the beginning of the day to the end of the day. That's the other thing which they divide up, but that location manager has to do, they have to open up, they have to close. They got to manage the property, make sure that it's taken care of. And, uh, they've done a great job for us. So we're, we're glad to have them as part of the team and locals especially. So that's really been great. So thank you to both of them. Um, and you know, the other good thing that, you know, you guys do is that you have an intern program, training program. Um, and you had it last time and we employed some of your interns on, on Mary Kiss Cam and we're doing it again on this one, which is a great thing because you're training people up and that's a very special program. And we're, we're here to help support you in that because then you, you, you do some of the training and then we give them the on the ground, boots on the ground training as PAs. So that helps us, that helps you, it helps the film industry. So that's another thing, a shout out to, to, you know, both of you for putting those, uh, intern, uh, training things together. So that's just the thing I wanted to mention and say, keep it up and do more of them.
Yep. Thank you. We are.
And we have one. Uh, do we have somebody that's been on here? No, I can't see anymore.
Yes, Eric.
Eric.
Eric was on our last one.
Yeah. Here comes.
There he is. Hey, Eric.
And Eric, if you want to, can you just give a, just a li- like literally a 30 second, like what is one of the workshops like to take part in?
Well, it was, uh, I don't know. I was just thrilled to be a part of it at the time because I was just curious about it, but, you know, really exciting to just see, you know, the behind the scenes of it, how it was all made and experience the different, you know, apartments a little by little. And then, but I, I kind of ended up learning a little bit what I like to, which like, or what department I kind of like, which I kind of like the, the grip and electric grip and gaffers kind of department. And I mean, now I'm hoping to like kind of, I, I, I'm just, uh, I'm kind of debating whether to just, you know, go all in on this, you know, as a, a grip and gaffer. I mean, I'm a set PA on here now. But, uh, and I'm, you know, just a day player, but I'm, uh, hopefully, this might actually be, you know, what I'm going to be doing. And hopefully, is if the movies, then I would just keep doing it. You know, transfer my, uh, my whole kind of career, but I, I think, uh, it would just be more of a and, uh, I know I've been enjoying it so far. Just, I've only been on this one for a couple of days now, but it's been great, you know, and the workshop was so helpful too, you know? And it led me to this, so.
Awesome.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ricky and Sherry, you know, for, you know, introducing me to this, you know?
We're happy, we're happy to have you. We do want to open it up for questions. If anybody does have any questions, you can either turn on your camera or if you're shy, you don't have to, you can throw them in the chat. Um, and just if you have any questions for Corey and, and his, um, artistic direction or the producers or, um, about the industry, let us know. We're here. That's the purpose of these meetings is for you all to, I feel like you have access to, um, the teams and can ask the questions that you maybe have been, um, wondering about. We're here for them.
There's Abdi.
Hey y'all, how's it going? Yeah, well, um, no, this is, this is a really great, uh, conversations. I just kind of wanted to soak it all in and appreciate you guys for, for having it. Um, I feel like I got questions for everybody, you know, and, and I feel like along the way you guys are answering them, but the, the main thing I'm, I'm curious about from the production team as well as Corey on a creative side. Um, what did you guys, I mean, again, you know, John and Manny, you guys have been here before with, you know, Mary Kiss Cam. But even back then, maybe in terms of what you guys wish you knew about Minnesota, whether it was the crew side of things, whether it was like just kind of the landscape, the typography, you know, here in the cities, it's a bit flat, but up there it's, you know, kind of, you know, you can kind of cheat it to something else. But just in general, what, what did you guys wish you knew? And I, I, I'm very curious about, you know, especially this conversation about location managing and the work there, because in my mind, I think it's more of like pre-production prep, getting things situated. But, but it sounds like there's still that kind of constant throughout. Um, you know, I, I, I worked a little bit with the locations manager out in LA and it was more so putting out fires of like, you know, people in the community saying, well, hey, you know, the business next door to me got money and they got paid out. Like why do, why do I, you know, why not me and my business and you're hurting it? So just that is kind of like the idea that I have in terms of a constant, but I'd love to learn more from, from your perspective, David and, and the team, but, thank you in advance.
I gotta be honest with you on, uh, Mary Kiss Cam, we never had that, like never once. Everybody was, we never had anyone saying you're, you know, you're impeding on our business or you're doing anything like that. They were more of, hey, come shoot here. And that's, I, I think that for me, when John and I first went and, uh, location scout and Mary Kiss Cam, I think that we both every night would go back to the hotel going, where are we? It was, it was one of those things where it was like, that doesn't happen in LA and that's not, there's a couple of other places that it's not happening now in, you know, that people have been, um, shooting for a long time. So will that change in Duluth? I don't know. Um, I hope not. Cause it's, it, there's so many wonderful locations. And I think that's when John, Corey and I went around with, with Ricky and Sherry, looking at all these locations, you know, I, I almost felt like this, um, we were, we, we had these too many location problems. It was like, you know, and, and, and I think that is, is a lovely feeling to have. So, um, you know, we haven't had to pay people out and, you know, and stuff which is wonderful. Um, but again, for Corey, um, this might be a question for him, especially the creative way is you write a script and then a producer goes, oh, here, by the way, we're shooting it here. And, you know, he, he, I mean, Corey, you can speak on this, but, and what the creative process was on that, but you know, the, the location is, is always an additional character in, in the movie. So if you wanna.
Yeah, I mean, I think my philosophy of going into it is always you have to stay adaptable. And you just have to know what the core of the story is and try to get as close to that as possible when you're finding locations and and doing anything else. And so Mandy was absolutely right. We were really in a lot of ways spoiled for choice because we had a lot of great options, but you know, uh, in looking at like the key location, if we could get 80 to 90% there from like what's in this script, then I just was confident we could kind of retrofit the story to adapt to the house. And you know, that's part of the fun, part of it too is, one of the key locations you're walking through and you get inspired and say like, oh, I could tweak the script to like, make this aspect of the specific location like a story point. And you know, it's, I think the biggest trap is if you just get stuck and stubborn and say it has to be, you know, a hundred percent this. It's if you stay adaptable and know what the story needs, then you can ultimately find whatever you need.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. It's, you know, we, we say this a lot with our own business, uh, create without fear. That's the hashtag and that, that goes, it's an evolution. Creativity should evolve. We're, we're, e- every moment dictates the next moment.
Yeah, it's also, it's, it's a reaction, but it's also a, uh, an absorption of the moment. To make sure that you can move forward. And it's when you start to fight that absorption that, that it really becomes a, a conflict situation between creativity and the product at the end. Um, and as, as locations, I think we're aware of that, but we're, again, we're new with this. Our perspective might be.
Well, we're, we're new at this, but we, you know, we've managed, yeah. So new, but not new.
Yeah. New in this situation.
And I think that's interesting because a lot of the, the, the different positions that people have can apply to film industry, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we can adapt our, our site management issues with, uh, with the, the pond building and the water features and so forth. And our creative background, yours with the writing, our mind with the visual arts applies to this. And that's the thing that I think a lot of people don't realize is that you can adjust, you can adapt your existing abilities to this film industry. And it's, it's the same process. It's a creative process, right? I mean, Corey, I, I'm totally impressed with you jumping into this and, and doing what you're doing right now. Because I know what it takes. It's a create without fear moment. And you've got a great team behind you. I completely impressed with these people because of the, the limited involvement we had with Mary Kiss Cam. And I'm so excited for that to come out and I'm so excited for this movie too.
It's just a really amazing confluence of skills.
And, and just, you know, to answer some of the other questions, what could we need, you know, what could we need more of? You know, obviously you're working on it. It's that database, that database of knowing who the crew are, the more crew that we have, resource, and you're working on that. That's a good thing. The other would be if there was a database of location pictures, like for example, the first location we filmed that the homeowner is, has this, uh, you know, trailer and you know, they were asking, well, what are we doing in the future? And I said, we'll take pictures of it. Maybe put it on your website. So people know that they could film there if they wanted to. And maybe that's something else that somebody can start to build in the future is a. What's that one? Then you gotta give, you gotta get it to them because he needs to get his thing up there. And so expand that. The more there is that we can find that, you know, in advance before you go out and scout, that's good too. So those kinds of things, just knowing in advance. So you come in and you're not having to go on a learning curve, you know, for too long. Um, so that's just some of the stuff I would suggest to answer your question.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ricky.
Actually, I think that's, uh, I think that we've had a great conversation tonight and I so appreciate all of you guys being here tonight. And, um, we're so thankful, Corey, Mandy, John, for you guys bringing this project here. I mean, we just think the world of you and, um, you've got a whole community here tonight that I, that is also equally as excited. So thank you again. And if you guys have any questions, whether it's later or you, you're thinking of something that you thought, dang, I wish I would ask that question. Just know that Sherry and I are always here and we're very available and we appreciate you all. So thank you so much, you guys.
We know your team is super, super, um, busy. So thank We know your team is super, super um busy, so thank you for your time. Thank you all. Um, Ricky and I'll hang out just a little bit longer, um, and uh ask, answer any questions for the public, but we know you guys have to go because you're shooting, so.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great.
Bye. Thank you, guys.
Take care, everybody.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Eric. I didn't mean to throw you uh uh totally into it immediately, but.